Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the May Business Meeting of the Rock Hill School District. Before we get started, I'd like to remind you, if you would like to address the Board about an item that's on the agenda, there's a sign-up sheet in the back, or actually a sign-up form on the little table in the back. If you sign up, put your name, address, telephone number, and what you wish to speak to, and any organization you might represent, and bring it up, and then we will allow you that opportunity right after recognitions. It's my pleasure to introduce Laura Rae Robinson, a very soon-to-be sixth grader at Dutchman Creek, but right now she's classified as a fifth grader at Mount Gallant Elementary School to open our meeting for us.
Good evening, Mr. Vining, members of the Board, Superintendent Pugh, and ladies and gentlemen of the audience. I'm Laura Rae Robinson, a fifth grader at Mount Gallant Elementary School. I am honored to represent Mount Gallant and to bring greetings from my principal, Mr. Jacob Maury, and the faculty and staff of Mount Gallant. Please stand with me at this time and remain standing for a moment of silence and then for the Pledge of Allegiance. Now for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's now my pleasure to tell you about my experiences in Mount Gallant night. I have been at Mount Gallant since kindergarten. Mount Gallant holds a very special place in my heart. All of the teachers at this school have positive attitudes and really make me feel comfortable. These teachers have impacted me in ways unimaginable over my six years here. This year, I will graduate from Mount Gallant, and I couldn't feel more prepared for middle school. I have learned so much here. I am sad to have to say goodbye, but the memories I made here will last a lifetime. Thank you for inviting me to represent Mount Gallant Elementary School.
Laura Rae left a lot of things out. It's gonna take me a while. She was on Drama Club, Science Bowl, Junior Beta Club, Battle of the Books. She's been successful in the classroom and the stage, and I should tell you now, she will be performing in Mary Poppins this mid-July at Johnson, at Hall, I guess Johnson Hall at Winthrop. I did ask her when she was gonna be moving to California, and she said, "Not anytime soon."[178.90][178.90](Laughter). But she has been involved with Showtime Theater Company and has starred in Annie, Wizard of Oz, Into the Woods, Susical, The Music Man, Aladdin. Her parents are Andrew and Vivian Robinson, and one of them's back there, I think one of them's roaming.[197.43][197.43](Laughter). And she has a sister, Ella, who's a second grader at Mount Gallant, and she's back there, and I heard the school wasn't big enough for both of them, so that's really why Laura Rae is moving on to Dutchman Creek. So now I'll open it up for any comments or questions. Ms. Miller.
Well, Laura Rae, I've known you since you were in kindergarten, and you have grown up to be such a phenomenal and well-spoken young lady. I am so excited for you, for Dutchman Creek. I know you're gonna have a ton of fun. I'm assuming that you're gonna do drama across the street, too. Am I wrong?
No? No.
I know that you're gonna do great over there, too, so I just wanna wish you the best of luck, and I hate, I wasn't there today for graduation, but congratulations.
Thank you.
Explain a little bit more about Showtime Theater. What is that?
Well, it's a group of really talented people who teach us about the theater, and every spring and fall, we do shows.
Uh-huh.
And we perform them. And in the past, our fall shows, we have always taken to a Junior Theater Festival, and we have performed skits of them. It's like a national thing in Atlanta, Georgia.
Okay. Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Laura, since you've been at Mount Gallant for a long period of time, what would you suggest or would tell your principal to change at Mount Gallant?
We should add the sixth grade back.[298.83][298.83](Laughter).
So you're not ready to go to middle school, huh?
No.[307.12][307.12](Laughter).
Okay, thank you.
Wendy.
For everyone who has heard my story, and hundreds have, of the very imaginative child at the children's museum who took a red ball and turned it into an apple and became a princess and acted out the, made her grandma act out the whole Snow White with her, this is the young lady.[334.71][334.71](Laughter).
I'm so impressed with the things I've heard about you.
Thank you.
I am just excited to be able to be one of your, one in your audience today. I'm hopeful, though, that when you go to act, and when you are in plays, and you are pretending to be someone else, what is it that you have that allows you to memorize all those words, all those lines, all those actions, and still keep up with school? What is it?
I would say it's determination.
Uh-huh.
And that I know that if I want to keep doing something I love, I have to keep up my grades and everything else, and so that keeps me going strong.
Is that something your sister recognizes, too?
Yes.
Because you're an older sister now, aren't you? My goodness, my goodness, I'm so proud of you.
Thank you.
I'm sure you're gonna make your parents continue to smile as I'm smiling. Do it, girl. Just continue to do it. That's good.
Ms. Miller.
And there is actually one thing on this sheet that's not on here, and that is that I happen to know, and I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but I also happen to know that Laura Rae is an extremely talented singer. She's not only an actress, she's a very, very talented singer, but I'm not gonna ask you to sing, I promise. I'm just saying that that should've been on the sheet.[443.03][443.03](Laughter).
She did sing for us tonight.
Yeah, she did, but soloist, as in, you know, we may see her on TV in the future. I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Laura Rae, you are very well-spoken, and I know that your administrators and your teachers are very proud of you, as well as your parents, and I know you would love to stay at Mount Gallant, but tell me one thing you're looking forward to at Dutchman Creek next year.
I'm really looking forward to the more freedom that you have in middle school, and this might sound kinda silly, but lockers.
You're looking forward to lock, and Mr. Moten, your principal is here.[486.62][486.62](Laughter). She's looking forward to lockers. Most of them dread that. That's a good thing.
All right. Thank you.[494.69][494.69](Applause). The local news media has notified in writing of the agenda. On Friday, May 25th, there have been two additions since then under recognitions. Item Q, recognition of the South Carolina 4H Engineering Challenge winners, and Item R, recognition of Band Directors Association Outstanding Performance Awards. And tonight, we are competing with awards programs around the district, so we may not have everybody, but we will give you time to leave after the recognitions, and Dr. Pugh will remind you. So if you would try to stay until the recognitions, we'll give you an opportunity to leave en masse, but be sure that you all know you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting. And so, but we're not running you off. You're welcome to stay, so. Now I entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So I'll move.
Second.
It's moved by Terry Hutchinson and seconded by Helena Miller. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Next up is recognition, Dr. Pugh.
And if I could ask Ms. Rae to join me for tonight's recognitions. Rock Hill Police Department, and the York County Sheriff's Office. Working collaboratively, Rock Hill Schools, staff, and law enforcement agencies, along with our students and parents, strive to provide a safe and secure learning environment for our students. Tonight, we would like to say thank you to representatives from the Rock Hill Police Department, and allow each school resource officer to share a personal story about their involvement with our schools. Tonight, we welcome Officers Coleman, Jones, Marino, Shealy, and Slosson to come forward and share with us. Additionally, we would like to congratulate Officer Marino on being named the Optimist Club Resource Officer of the Year. So if you all would come forward, let us thank you.[658.00][658.00](Applause).
Well, first of all, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm Officer Dominique Coleman. I'm the resource officer at Dutchman Creek Middle School. I don't really know what to say.[700.12][700.12](Laughter). I enjoy being a resource officer because I do like the bonds that it allows us to afford with the juveniles, I mean with the students, I'm sorry.[708.32][708.32](Laughter). It's a habit.[710.32][710.32](Laughter). I apologize.[712.32][712.32](Laughter). With my students, just seeing them every day kinda gets them to see us in a different light outside of the regular patrol or, you know, just everyday officer, I guess, interactions. So they talk to you a lot more, they learn more about you and what you do, and they realize that you're here to help them, as well as just be a mentor, and someone to just talk to if they need anything. So I do enjoy that part of it because it just better bonds with the community, based on your everyday, everyday job. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.[747.12][747.12](Applause).
We're all fighting to get up here to the mic.[756.32][756.32](Laughter).
My name is Officer Tony Slosson, Jr.
I've been a police officer with Rock Hill for nine-plus years now. I've been a resource officer, at the end of this school year will be two years. I really do enjoy working with the students and juveniles.[774.62][774.62](Laughter). Just creating that bond and letting them know that I'm a person, not just a figurehead at the school, I think it really makes an impact. Hopefully, it does make a positive impact on the students as I'm able to interact with them, both in letting them know what the law sees, actions taken, and just, you know, every day, the things that they go through. It's amazing, the things that they have, that they're exposed to now compared to back when I was in school, and I wasn't that far along, that long ago, but it's just, they're fighting against a lot now, and so it's good to be able to be in there and be rooting for them. Thank you.[819.38][819.38](Applause).
My name is Jonathan Moreno. I'm the school resource officer at Salute Trail Middle School. Before I get started, I wanna thank all the school staff, the teachers, the principals. Trust me, my job is very, very easy compared to some of these classrooms that I have been in. We're blessed to have such motivated, passionate teachers and school administrators. With that being said, I'm originally from Miami, Florida. I came here as a big-time city slicker to a smaller town, but I jumped right in. As soon as I arrived, I started coaching, mentoring at any school that would bring me in. Fortunately, everybody was open to it, and I got to meet a lot of students on the way. Once I got into law enforcement, and I had a few years on the street, I just knew it was about time to jump into the schools. It's a perfect fit, working with the youth, mentoring, working with student athletes, coaching. Anything that's out in the schools is just wonderful to see. It's really great how we all work together. But with that being said, thank you guys for what you do, and have a great night.[891.12][891.12](Applause).
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Daniel Shealy. I am the school resource officer for South Point High School. I've been a police officer for a little over seven years now, and I'm just two days shy of my first year as a school resource officer. So I started about seven years ago. I started in our jail, worked my way to patrol, worked as a street crimes officer for a little bit, and then decided to be a school resource officer. Had you asked me six years ago if I'd be in this position, I probably would've laughed in your face. Never once saw myself being a school resource officer, but I gotta say, it's one of the best decisions I've ever made. So I'm the resource officer for South Point High School. I don't know if you're aware or not, but we got a football team.[931.43][931.43](Laughter). And, you know, South Point's known for athletics. One thing that I noticed when I got there, by the way, it was a huge learning curve, but one of the things I noticed when I got there was the importance of athletics, the importance of academics, and something I noticed was there was kinda been in-between that kinda lacked something. So I have a passion for stuff outdoors, hunting, fishing, that type of stuff. So what I decided to do was I started a fishing club. We call it the Anglers Club because that's cooler sounding. But I started the South Point High School English Club. We've got about thirty students involved. We go out about once a month. I tell my wife that I do it because, you know, I enjoy bonding time, but really, I just wanna go out and fish for a day.[981.43][981.43](Laughter). But no, really, I thoroughly enjoy it. The kids have really taken to it really well. I think it's something awesome that we've been able to do through the graciousness of the school. They've supported me 100%, and hopefully, we're gonna continue that on into next year. But I look forward to, for next year and see what comes. Thank you.[1001.26][1001.26](Applause).
I've been actually to hold the mic. My name is Thomas Jones, one of the older resource officers with Rock Hill. I've been in police work since 1976, and retired and came back in 2002 as a school resource officer, and I've been here ever since, and certainly enjoy it. It's been a thrill. When the chief asked if I would be willing to come back into law enforcement, I thanked him, but I said, "No, thanks," and he said, "Well, you know, there are some positions in the schools, and you'd be a good mix for that. You run some mentorship programs here in the city," and I've always been active with the Worthy Boys and Girls Camps, so I thought, "Well, we'll give that a try." I've been very fortunate. I have enjoyed it thoroughly, working with the educators. Love the students. I love the students. I feel like I work at the Flexible Learning Center. When I look at those students there, I look at them as my children, and in some cases, my grandchildren. But I enjoy it. I really do, and it's an opportunity for we can impart with the children and maybe give them some direction in the day that we live in that is so needed. And so it's just a privilege, you know? My hat's off to the educators, and I thank each of you, Ms. Pugh. I thank each of you, and God bless you.[1103.04][1103.04](Applause).
Again, thank you for all that you do each day at our schools. We truly appreciate you. Oh, yes, sir?[1117.82][1117.82](Laughter). Ms. Shelby?[1179.32][1179.32](Laughter). And I'm gonna read just a little bit. She really doesn't need an introduction. I think everybody in this room knows her. For the past thirty-five years, anyone who called the Rock Hill Schools office heard the familiar and oh-so-sweet voice of Ms. Shelby Sapp. Tonight, we'd like to say thank you to Ms. Shelby for her service to Rock Hill Schools and the hospitality she has provided for generations of visitors to our district office. In total, Ms. Shelby served the district and the Rock Hill community for forty-three years. She moved to her role at the district level after eight years at Bellevue Elementary School. Thank you, Ms. Shelby. We wish you the very best in retirement.[1228.54][1228.54](Applause).
Well, while Shelby's getting her picture taken, I thought I'd comment is, in my time on the Board, I would say if there's a most valuable person in the district, it would be Shelby. Everyone she touched that either came to the district office or called on telephone, you know, they had a wonderful experience because of Shelby, and it just, she was instrumental in recruiting superintendents. I mean, people don't realize what someone in that role has the ability to do, and she just was a great image for the district. She's the only retiree that has, since I've been on the Board, that has gotten a standing ovation by the other retirees at the retirement banquet. So that's, I can't say enough about her impact on the whole school district.
Absolutely. And she has actually volunteered her time to come make sure Ms. Wendy, who is our new person in the front, that she is transitioning well, so we thank her for that as well. Congratulations to District Energy and Systems Manager, Kim Melander. Kim, if you wanna come on up to the front? His leadership and commitment to energy conservation efforts in Rock Hill Schools led to the design and installation of a rooftop solar system at Independence Elementary School. The project, which has already demonstrated substantial energy savings for our district, was awarded the Project of the Year by the Association of South Carolina Energy Managers. In its first month of use, the rooftop solar system saved the district more than $3,400 when compared to the same time period a year earlier. The power bill for the campus was $469.32 in March. Congratulations, and thank you, Kim.[1370.26][1370.26](Applause). Congratulations. Great job. Thank you. Thank you. In March, Rock Hill High School Theater students attended the South Carolina Speech and Theater Association Festival for the first time ever. As a group, the program won Best New School, and four students won awards at the festival. If you would come forward when I say your name. Tyler Barber and Emily Taylor Oxendine won first place in dramatic duet acting. Bailey Brooks and Matt White won first place in comedic duet acting. Congratulations.[1445.82][1445.82](Applause). Blumenthal Performing Arts Center regarding their production of Big River. Northwestern High School Theater received a Blume Award nomination for Best Musical and were able to perform a number from the show at the Blumenthal Performing Arts Center in Charlotte on May 20th as part of the Sixth Annual Blume Awards. Northwestern Senior Herbert White also received a nomination for Best Actor as Jim, and Clay Smith received a nomination for Best Supporting Actor for Huck Finn. At the award show, Herbert White was awarded Best Feature Performer out of the twenty-three Charlotte-area schools participating in the event. If those students would come forward, and they may be at their academic awards tonight, congratulations to Northwestern High School.[1559.01][1559.01](Applause). In its first year of existence, the Rock Hill High School Indoor Winter Wind Ensemble finished its season with an impressive showing at the WGI World Championships held last month in Dublin, Ohio. Competing against groups from around the world, the Bear Cats finished in ninth place. We'd now like to show a video highlighting the students in the lead up to their trip to Ohio, and then we'll ask any of those students who are here to please come forward.
Please welcome to the floor, 2018 edition of the Rock Hill Winds![1612.12][1612.12](Cheering and applause).
We're performing our show called "The Gallery." It is the story of statues in an art gallery that come to life and become mischievous and have fun, and then suddenly, there's a janitor that appears that they have to creep around and still have their fun without getting caught.
Ladies and gentlemen, the gallery is now closed.[1641.32][1641.32](Music).
The Rock Hill Winds is in its first year of existence. We're part of the WGI Circuit as well, which is Winter Guard International. There's never been a group like this in our district before, and there's actually only five other groups in the state of South Carolina that have a competing winds group. So we're real excited to be a part of something so new, and just looking forward to our kids being real successful this year.[1671.57][1671.57](Music).
For the percussion, it's different in the fact that we kinda have more different music. There's different parts where you're not gonna have a drum line or a battery, and it's just a fantastic experience for everybody across the board.
It's just an awesome experience.[1698.12][1698.12](Music).
It kinda brings people together, and it helps you, like, be better as, not just a musician, but like, as a person.[1713.32][1713.32](Music).
And then late April, we will make our way to Dayton in hopes to play swell and show everyone that we can do just as well as they do, even though we're young.[1728.23][1728.23](Cheering and applause).
And congratulations to Mr. Ben Hingle and the Rock Hill High School Indoor Wind Ensemble. If any of them are here, we'd love to shake your hand and get a picture. Congratulations. We'll give them a round of applause.[1760.82][1760.82](Applause). Congratulations to students in the Cosmetology Program at the Applied Technology Center who competed last month at the Association of Cosmetology Salon Professionals Conference in Myrtle Beach. This competition is open to all cosmetology students in the state, both post-secondary and secondary career and technical programs. Thank you to instructor Ms. Lisa Puckett for her hard work and the dedication to help your students excel. If the following... If the following students would come forward when their names are called. Mary DeJesus of Northwestern High School won second place Hair Shaping and third place in Finish Styling. Brianna Patton, Rock Hill High School. Miranda Cornilla, Rock Hill High School. Hannah Trimnall, Rock Hill High School, won second place in Ladies Evening Makeup. Sydney Johnson, Rock Hill High School. Congratulations to these students. Also, from the Applied Technology Center, we have students that will be receiving awards tonight from our Health Science class. Congratulations to students in Ms. Laurel Georgia's Health Science Clinical Studies Program at the Applied Technology Center. Two weeks ago, all 16 students in the program passed the South Carolina Certificate Nurse Aid, otherwise known as CNA, exam. This semester, all 16 students passed both the Written Assessment and Skills Assessment on their first attempt. Congratulations to each of you for your outstanding performance. And as I call your name, if you will please go towards Mr. Frost. Morgan Ayers. Brittany Ballard. Brandy Bridges. Haley Cribb. Abigail Dorton. Carson Finley. Kiana Harden. Megan Hargit. Katie Holden. Kalen Huratt. Cortia Johnson. Arceery McFadden. Peyton Morrison. Faith Murillo. And Kaylee Staten. Congratulations, ladies. Two of these young ladies are going to go on to receive their nursing degree, and one is going to be a special ed teacher, so congratulations.
You could probably sign a contract today.
Congratulations to Northwestern High School Senior Victoria Wilform. For the second consecutive year, Victoria won the gold medal in the high jump at the South Carolina High School League Class 5A State Championships. Tonight, we congratulate Victoria and her coaches Calvin Hudgens and David Hegwood. And I think that Victoria could not be here, but I believe at least one of her coaches, both of the coaches are here, so we'd love for you to come forward. We'll get a picture and shake your hands. We will try to get Victoria back in June, but now, this is her second consecutive win, so that is fabulous. Earlier this month, Rock Hill Schools Facilities Service Crew members were recognized by Pioneer Athletics for their work to maintain the natural grass playing surface at District a healthy school assessment and/or action plan to address student health and well-being. Three Stadium South. Crew members Ron Moore, Keith McNeely, Tony Herring, and Brian Gordon were presented This year, Rock Hill Schools achieved the 90% target set by the Alliance. a 2017 Field of Excellence Award winner banner. By meeting the target, schools were eligible to win a $500 Target e-Gift card. This is the first such award for our facilities service crew members, and we are certainly India Hook, Richmond Drive, and Raven Academy each won a $500 Target e-Gift card for their proud of their dedication to not only the field at District Three South, but for their school to use to support their wellness efforts. commitment to maintaining all facilities in the district. So if their administrators are here, if you'll come forward, congratulations. And if you've not seen the job they do on our fields, you need to check it out during football season. Rock Hill Schools Communication Team and South Point High School were among 139 winners They do a great job. So if you guys would please come forward. at South Carolina Chapter of the National School Public Relations Association Annual Rewards for Excellence Award Ceremony, held on April 27 in Columbia. This awards program annually recognizes outstanding communications and public relations efforts by South Carolina schools, school districts, and education agencies and associations. For the second consecutive year, South Point High School was among the honorees for its print marketing entries. Dr. Al Leonard, Principal of South Point, collected awards for the school's advertisement in the 2017 South Carolina High School League Weekend of Championships Game Program and the 2017 Year in Review Advertisement that appeared in the Herald in advance of graduation last spring. At the district level, the Rock Hill Schools Communication Team earned seven awards for its ongoing effort to strategically share stories of success and compassion through a multitude of communication mediums and platforms. Rock Hill Schools mobile app was recognized with a Golden Achievement Award, the Rock Hill Schools website, district calendar, and Quick Facts. Thank You Dr. White and Learning in Our Backyard each received awards in the photography category. Thank You Dr. White captures an emotional embrace between a Sunset Park Center for Accelerated Students Studies student and principal Dr. Tammy White, following a surprise announcement at the school that sent students to a once-in-a-lifetime, behind-the-scenes game-day experience at the Carolina Panthers as special guest of Kwan Short. Learning in Our Backyard is a photo essay showing Ebenezer Avenue Elementary School Principal Chris Beard and students exploring a creek while on a field trip to Rock Hill's River Park. Rock Hill social media platforms and use of Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. And finally, my Ebonport family won in the video category. Congratulations to all of these groups in these awards.
Now, is this a reenactment of one from Rosewood Elementary School? Mr. Leonard was Michael's principal at Rosewood Elementary School. He's old, is that what you said? Oh, and Sullivan, too. So, now we understand why Al didn't have as much hair as he probably used to have.
When you're the person writing the script for this, sometimes it's really hard, and he asked me about it, I said, "You got, we gotta do this, even though it's you." One of the goals from our board and from our district was to really enhance our communications efforts over the last couple of years. Michael has done a fabulous job, and this is evidence of the great things that are happening in your department, so thank you very much for that. Congratulations to the following Dutchman Creek Middle School Theater students for receiving a superior rating at the South Carolina Junior Thesbian Festival. The students have advanced to the Junior Thesbian Festival to be held in Sacramento, California in February 2019. As I call your name, if you'll please come forward. Aiden Armstrong, solo acting musical theater solo. Savannah McCart, musical theater solo. Carmen Sanders, group acting. Norris Williams, solo acting. Gabriella Daniels, group acting. Maya Reed, group acting. McKenna Baker, duet acting. And Brianna Carroll, duet acting. Congratulations to these students. Wish you the best as you head to Sacramento. That's awesome. Earlier this spring, four fourth-grade students from Oakdale Elementary School competed in the South Carolina 4H Engineering Challenge, sponsored by Enlightened South Carolina, held on the airport campus of Midlands Technical College. The team of Kristen McCullough, Jaylee Borja, India Hentfeld, and Michaela Hazard placed third at the event. Those students are here, if you please come forward. This showing is even more impressive since the students competed against teams from middle and high schools. Congratulations, guys. That's great. The South Carolina Band Directors Association Outstanding Performance Award is the highest possible award given to a band program in the state of South Carolina. Points are accumulated through participation and ratings earned at the following state-sponsored performance events. All-State and Region Band, Concert Performance Assessment, Solo and Ensemble Festival. It is with great pleasure to share with you that Dutchman Creek Middle School and Rollinson Road Middle School have earned the points necessary to receive the South Carolina Band Directors Association Outstanding Performance Award for the 2017-2018 school year. The outstanding concert and individual student performances are a testament to the high quality of teaching that occurs in the band departments at our schools. Tonight, we recognize Directors Scott McGuire from Dutchman Creek and Michael Skelet, who could not be here, from Rollinson Road. So if Scott would come forward, Mr. McGuire. And if we have folks that would like to leave, again, as Mr. Vining said, we'd love for you to stay, but if you have other things that you need to do, now would be a great time for you to slip out. Thank you very much, and congratulations to everyone.
On the Consent Action Agenda, includes minutes from the April 9th work session, the April 16th Board Retreat, the April 23rd Business Meeting. Includes personnel recommendations and approval of activity bus rental requests for Winthrop, the Rock Hill Police Department for Safety Patrol, the Worthy Boys and Girls Camp, and Emmett Scott Center. I now entertain a motion to approve, moved by Terry Hutchison and seconded by Jane Sharp. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. Next up is Action Agenda. We have a list of policies for second read. Those policies for second read were discussed at the April Work Session and the April Business Meeting, were approved for first read, and the May Work Session. Once, if they are approved tonight, they will become policy. There's a list of G policies, which we have been taking as a group. I will read each G policy for second read, and if anyone would like to take that out and address it separately, we will. If not, we'll take all these as one motion. First one is Policy GDBC and Administrative Rules, Support Staff, Supplementary Pay Overtime. First one is Policy GDBC and Administrative Rule, Support Staff Supplementary Pay Overtime. Next one is Policy GBEBD and Administrative Rule. That's Acceptable Use of Technology. Next one is Policy GCC and GCD, Staff Leaves and Absences. Next is Eliminate Policy GDC/GDD, Support Staff Leaves and Absences. Next is Approved Policy GCRD, Tutoring for Pay. Next is Policy GCQC and GCQD, Resignation of Professional Staff. Next is Approval Policy. Let's stop right there with the G-Policies. I didn't hear anyone request to take those separately. So, I'll take a motion to approve these G-Policies in one motion.
So moved.
It's moved by Helena Miller, seconded by Wendy Cole. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. Those now are district policy. We have Approval Policy JIJ, Student Protest, Demonstrations, and Strikes. I entertain a motion to approve. Moved by Jane Sharp, seconded by Terry Hutchison. Discussion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. That also becomes district policy. Next is Policy IKF and Administrative Rule, Graduation Requirements. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Mildred Douglas.
Second.
Seconded by Wendy Cole. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. Now, we have Policies for First Read. These policies were discussed at the May Work Session. First is Approval Policy DM Cash in School Buildings. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mildred Douglas has moved, and Helena Miller is seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. Next up is Policy KBE, Relations with Support Organizations. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
It's moved by Mildred Douglas.
I second.
Seconded by Ann Reed. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. Next up is Approval of New Administration Rule, KBE, Relations with Support Organizations. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mildred Douglas has moved. Is there a second?
I second.
Jane Sharp is seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. Next up is Approval of New Courses for Accelerate Program at South Point, which is a program that's in conjunction with the Governor's School. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Mildred Douglas.
Second.
Seconded by Wendy Cole. Discussion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. Next up is Approval of School Board Election Forum Date of September 25th at the Central Office, 6:30 PM. Terry Hutchison has moved to approve. Is there any second? Jane Sharp is seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. Next up is Approval of Lease for the Boys and Girls Club at the Flexible Learning Center. And the only question I would have is, how many years have they been renting space or leasing space from us?
The Boys and Girls Club started its teen center in 2012, sir.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. I entertain a motion to approve. So moved. Moved by Terry Hutchison, seconded by Mildred Douglas. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Have any opposed? Jane, did you vote earlier on that? Okay. Motion carries 7-0. Next up is Approval of Lease for the Carolina Community Actions, which is Head Start at Civius Circle Family Learning Center. Of course, we've had an agreement with them for a long time at Edgewood, and this is the second year at the Civius Circle.
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
It's moved by Terry Hutchison.
Second.
Seconded by Helena Miller. All right. Discussion.
Is this a single-year lease?
I couldn't hear you, ma'am.
Single-year lease, sir?
The period of the lease is renewable one year at a time, and it has a contemplated five years within it. But yes, ma'am, it is an annual renewable lease, mainly because of the footprint of the building, which is still undergoing some changes as the different programs at that center kind of adjust out to their space.
All right.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. That concludes our action items for tonight. We have no communications. Next up is Report of the Superintendent.
More than 1,200 students will graduate on Saturday, June 2nd. Northwestern High School Ceremony will begin at 10:00 AM, followed by South Point High School at 2:00 PM and Rock Hill High School at 6:00 PM. Each ceremony will be streamed live on the district website. If unable to attend graduation, the live stream will be available at www.rock-hill.k12.sc.us/graduation. Rock Hill Schools Adult Education will host their graduation on Tuesday, June 5th at 7:00 PM at Castle Heights Middle School. Members of the Board of Trustees are invited to attend this ceremony. Rock Hill Schools will host for the first time a summer graduation ceremony to recognize students who are able to complete requirements for graduation during summer school. The ceremony will be held on July 24th at 6:00 PM. On Tuesday, June 5th at 7:30 AM, district leaders will participate in the annual State of Rock Hill Breakfast with the City of Rock Hill. At the event, the district will provide an update on Rock Hill Schools. The school board will next meet on Monday, June 11th, 2018, when it holds a data session and work session. The next business meeting will be held on Monday, June 25th. At both meetings in June, the board will hear information on the 2018-2019 general fund budget. The public hearing will be June 11th, and a vote to approve the budget is expected June 25th as a part of the regularly scheduled business meeting. As a reminder, all meetings will continue to be streamed on our website and on Facebook, as well as being made available for on-demand viewing immediately following each broadcast. Online registration is currently open for new and returning students. Parents and legal guardians can begin the online enrollment and registration process for the 2018-2019 school year by visiting our website, www.rock-hill.k12.sc.us/register. The registration window is opening early this year to allow our families to complete the process before summer. Last month, more than 80 district-level administrators from across the United States visited our school district as part of the League of Innovative Schools Carolina's Conference. Visitors were able to tour several of our schools and programs, including the Language Immersion School at Richmond Drive, Montessori and Inquiry at Ebenezer Avenue, project-based learning through STEAM at Saluda Trail and South Point, as well as the variety of programs available to students at the Applied Technology Center. Officials with the League indicated the reviews of this event were the highest this year, with an average rating of 4.63 out of 5. In the post-event survey, visitors remarked flexible seating, cake course enhancements. We will look for ways to create real-world projects for our students and infuse authentic use of technology into those projects. Back-to-Pack Initiative will be shared with our foundation and local community organizations. Look at how to better incorporate technology activities into the middle school program. I will also continue to reinforce the wellness programs for our students, implementation of some of the personalized learning practices. I'd like to especially thank Dr. Harriet Jowrowski and Dr. Luanne Kokolas and their team for all the behind-the-scenes work to plan and execute a wonderful experience for our visitors. The Build on the Rock website has been updated with photos. You are encouraged to visit the district's capital building program, Build on the Rock, website, www.rock-hill.k12.sc.us/builtontherock for more information. This website provides status updates on active and planned construction projects in the district. On the page, viewers can see project descriptions, before and after photographs, and construction timelines. And this concludes tonight's announcements. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Douglas.
It says that it's beginning July 24th at 6:00 PM, but it's no place. Know what building?
Dr. Cook.
Come later.
We have, like, to be announced. We don't know what our numbers are right now, so that depends on, we will have the location. So, to be, it's forthcoming, and probably a couple of weeks we'll make the final decision.
Oh, okay. And just for our viewers, that announcement will be coming in the next couple of weeks, the location of summer school graduation.
Now, where will the breakfast be held? With the State of Rock has breakfast, with the city? What building?
Palmetto Room.
The Palmetto Room.
Okay, okay. It's not on here.
The Palmetto Room.
And you need to sign up for that in advance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Review of the Work Session held on May 14th.
Can I? Hold, just a second.
No. No. You can catch it at the end.
This is about the announcement.
Well, you can still get it at the end. Everybody's going to be here. At the Central Office, the board held its monthly data session, heard a report from the Castle Heights School Improvement Council, discussed Section G Policies Final Set, discussed Model Policy JIJ, Student Protest, Demonstrations, and Strikes, discussed Policy IKF and Administrative Rule, Graduation Requirements, reviewed proposed new courses for Accelerate Program, reviewed Policy DM Cash in School Buildings, reviewed Policy KBE and Administrative Rule, Relations with Support Organizations, received Activity Bus Rental Requests from Winthrop University, Rock Hill Police Department Safety Patrol, Worthy Boys and Girls Camp, and City of Rock Hill, Emmett Scott, reviewed lease agreements for Carolina Community Action, Civius Circle, and Boys and Girls Club at Flexible Learning Center, discussed a date for a school board election forum, received a 2018-19 budget update, received a 2018-19 food service and meal price update, discussed other and future business, and held an executive session for Personnel Matters. There was mention about the hearing on the budget. Just a little update, it's been a very challenging year budget-wise. There've been a lot of increases from the state, and we have a lot of, we have some issues with meeting certain staffing requirements. We are expecting to have to deal with a six-mill increase, which is the maximum allowed for the district. So, just to give everyone a heads-up, of course, homeowners do not pay this, but businesses do. So, there'll be more information at the hearing. They'll need to tune in or come to visit and hear it. Dr. Cook will become the Acting Superintendent next week. This is part of the transition to go from one superintendent administration to the other. I'm expecting this might very well be the last official duty of Dr. Pugh in terms of meetings, so she'll be here for the graduation ceremonies. I'll say that under Dr. Pugh's leadership, we passed the largest bond referendum in our history. We've got many capital projects. We were way ahead of the game on security measures for schools, on energy-saving measures. We have made changes to the choice programs. I think probably the biggest is the busing, where now every student has the ability to go to a choice school if they choose to do so. And, of course, I think that issue takes a lot of staff load for logistics of that busing. Also, the decision to have the immersion schools, the standalone school, I think does significant and sets our district apart from others. Maybe what you don't know about behind the scenes, she's been instrumental in efforts for goal-setting and measuring performance, which I think is needed to set the district into a continuous improvement, a belief of excellence. And so, we wish Dr. Pugh well. She's been too short a time, and we understand, and we certainly hope we don't have to just only see her at Clemson football games.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure.
Just for, I don't want a discussion for the board necessarily, but I need input. Tony Cox is working on the facilities planning, the group, and we're looking for names to be on that group, possibly somebody who would be, I don't want to prevent people from wanting to sign up, but people who would be a good transition to be on the next bond committee for a referendum. I think we need to strategically look at that as a possibility, to, you know, people who are interested, understand the planning, and would be willing and able to help man a campaign for a bond.
Mr. Vining, how do you want us to handle that? Do we want to send it to you, or just forward it straight to?
Send it to me.
Okay.
And, you know, I don't want it to be my recommendation, as they said I'm a short-timer on the board, but certainly those on the board, I think it's important. But I want to alert the board is the next bond referendum will be quicker than you And I don't know that it'll be due to growth, but certainly with old schools, you've got a lot of things that need to be done to modernize, security issues are always changing, we're going to always need to be looking in those areas. So, I think it's important that we not let our facilities deteriorate. And, you know, we've just got to look at our financial commitments and be prepared to move, to keep our schools where our community expects them to be. So, now, Ms. Douglas, your questions.
This one, I guess it, I'm looking at the one with online enrollment, and I know we still have some parents who really do not understand how to go online and enroll their students for the scheduling and everything. Will there be something in place where they can go into the school or receive some type
When online registration opened in April, at that time, every school had available in their lobby or near their lobby the opportunity for families to come in to answer that exact question, to receive assistance. They may or may not have internet at home, will have a laptop available, and that has been ongoing at every location since we started.
And that would take care of children who are transferring in. We may have some new students coming in from another.
Doesn't matter where you're coming from. If you need access to a computer, need help, our schools' doors are open and ready to help.
Thank you.
Any other comments or issues, board members?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I attended the ATC Award Ceremony the other night, and it was so exciting to see so many students receiving awards, being a part of that program, and the number of completers was just amazing. South Point Auditorium was just bursting at the scenes. I think we might have to move it to Winthrop next year.
That's a good problem to have, though.
It is. It was wonderful.
And I kind of piggyback on that. I actually read a pretty cool article here this past week talking about how some districts are now moving to having signing events for... for, um, students who are in their ATC-type facilities, who are getting, uh, employment and signing contracts with, with different local companies. So it's no longer only for students who are accepted to college or maybe get an academic scholarship, but they're celebrating the students that are getting a job. Um, and, and when they sign on their dotted line, and I think that's something that, that we really need to look at, look into, and, and may, maybe, maybe still the idea, so to speak. I know we've done, done it on a smaller scale, but what I'm talking about is a full-fledged signing event, and it was really, really nice seeing those students being appreciated and celebrated. So...
More taxpayers right away.
Yes.
Support our schools.
And I, I should piggyback. I was at a meeting where Comporium and Duke Energy said they had jobs that didn't have applicants to fill them. So, and, and the Duke jobs required a little bit of advanced, but the Comporium jobs were just required a high school diploma, so, um, the workforce, workforce is, is looking for bodies. Anything else from board members?
I'd, I'd like to piggyback on something that, that has been recognized already, and that is the recognitions that you have, um, recently added to the, well, the growing number of recognitions that has been added to our agenda. I feel it's, um, a very, very, very good plus for the schools and for the students that are being recognized, their parents, and everybody who watches the school board meeting on television can see the recognitions that are being given to students for their participation, and the fact that they're being recognized all across the state and in some instances, um, internationally. I'm just so pleased to see that, and I commend you for taking it to the next step and for recognizing students and their parents for the extra efforts that they have put forth. I think that's good. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Ann. Any other? All right, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for personnel matters, hirings, contractual matter, trademark agreement, and briefing on construction financing.
So moved.
I second.
Jane Sharp has moved. Mildred Douglas is seconded. And we will meet where?
I think we're gonna go to the third floor.
All right, we're, third, the superintendent's conference room is where we'll meet it. All, all those in favor raise your hand. All right, motion carries seven zero. We adjourn to executive session. I'll entertain a motion to leave executive session and...
So moved.
And, and enter, uh, open business session.
So moved.
It's moved by Terry Hutchinson.
Second.
Seconded by Helena Miller. Any discussion? All those in favor raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Are there any motions to come out of executive session?
Yes, sir. Um, I move that we approve a license agreement with the City of Rock Hill.
Is, is there a reason not to state what the license agreement is for?
I, I just asked him if I should, and he said no, so I didn't. I can't.
You feel like you should. It's a trademark license.
Okay. Well, let, let me restate the motion then.
Okay.
Um, I move that we approve a trademark licensing agreement with the, um, City of Rock Hill in reference to the use of the name Cherry Park.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Who, and it was Ann Reed seconded. All right, discussion. I say there's no expense on the district's part, just a commitment to behave ourselves.
[laughing] And, and to note that this is also not only for our school, but for all organizations that may be affiliated with that school.
All right. All, any other discussion? All those in favor raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Any other motions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the administration's recommendation for the chief acad, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the administration recommendation for the chief academic accountability officer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Terry Hutchinson. Any discussion? All those in favor raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Any other motions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I, uh, make a motion that we approve the administration's request for an additional $148,000 for the central office project with a new tot, new total
And that money will come from the sale of Oakland Avenue property.
Oakland Avenue property, yes.
All right. All right, a motion's made to, uh, take the $148,000 from the sale of Oakland Avenue property, uh, to complete the, uh, central office building, bringing in total of $7,448,000. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mildred Douglas. Discussion. All those in favor raise your hand. Opposed?
Oh, you, opposed?
You voted twice. You made the motion. All right, it, I got a four-three. Let's do it again. All those in favor raise your hand.
In favor, yes.
All right, it's four. Those against? Uh, Ann, are you voting this, are you voting against?
Four.
Four. Jane, you're, you're for, you're voting against. Okay, so we, we got Cole, um, Sharp, and Miller against. Are there any other motions?
Yes. I move that we accept the administration's recommendation for principal of Castle Heights Middle School.
I second the motion.
All right, it's seconded by Ann Reed. Any discussion? All those in favor raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Are there any other motions from executive session? I believe that's it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, third, or fourth?
I'm gonna give, I'm gonna give the motion to Helena Miller and the second to Wendy Cole. Both the, both ends of the, of the table. Any discussion? All those in favor raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. We stand adjourned.